Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. If we could call the meeting to order, please, tonight, and welcome. We have a good crowd in session tonight, so welcome to tonight's February 4th regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Getty. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you could all join me, please, for just a moment of prayer or silent reflection, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is not going to be David, or is it David? It's a... Can you? Can you do it two weeks in a row?
Certainly.
That's a burden that I would not ask just a normal person to do.
I can handle it.
But David Jones is going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Two down, fifty more to go.
Yeah, yeah. Trying to get that boy to talk one way or the other, right? Let me tell you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is in number fourteen, and that is meant to add the correct schools of Lou Henry Elementary School and Hoover Middle School on seventeen, to delete that item for this evening for further review. Also, along with the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from January twenty-eighth regular session.
Second. Very good, council. Do you have any questions at all regarding the agenda of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council, before we get started in our regularly scheduled business tonight, I believe we have some guests here. Ellen Vanderloo is here with a couple of people. Would you come up, Ellen, please? Just push. There you go. There you go. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Thank you for having me.
How are you, sir? What's your name?
Corey.
Corey, nice to meet you. And your name?
I'm Katie Klein.
Katie. Okay, great. Nice to see you guys. Why don't you come on around here, Corey? Just, there you go, like so, and like so, and kind of with this, the TV camera's right there, so we just want to, here, get up here, and face this way, right here. There we go. We want to... I have a certificate to award tonight regarding a mentoring program that Ellen is in charge of at the Waterloo School System, and this isn't on your schedule tonight, it's not on the agenda, but it's something that kind of came up kind of at the last minute. So what I'm going to do is read the certificate, and then I'll let you speak, Ellen, okay? Okay, so this certificate is actually from the Iowa Mentoring Partnership, if I understand right, and it's a certificate of appreciation from the state of Iowa for helping ensure a brighter future for children and youth across the state by serving as a dedicated mentor with the Certified Mentoring Program, Teammates Waterloo, Iowa. And I would like to present this to councilperson Steve Schmidt, if you would come forward, please.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There you go. So I don't... This was supposed to be a little bit of a surprise. I don't know if it is or not, Steve.
It is. Shocked to see him sitting there.
Yeah, okay. Well, I've learned a little bit, Steve, in the last week, from Ellen, that you are incredibly involved in the mentoring program and with this young man, and your work is much appreciated, obviously, in the Waterloo School Systems and in the state by the certificate that the governor signed and the attorney generals, or not the attorney general, that Kim Reynolds has signed, to honor Steve for his work in the schools with mentoring young children, and it's incredibly important. So somebody, Ellen, or Steve, or somebody, gets to say something about this award.
Okay, well, we just came tonight because we do very much appreciate, Steve, the, all the years that you have devoted to helping young people in our schools through both the Big Brother, Big Sister program, which Katie is a coordinator for, and also for Teammates Mentoring, and so we're just happy to recognize you and at the same time just put a call out to others in our community that mentors are always needed, and we would be happy, through either Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or Teammates, to have people from our community apply to become mentors for young men like Corey or young women in our community. And I don't know, Corey, would you like to say a little something? We were talking in the car, and how many, how many years, how old were you when Steve started being your mentor?
Since, like, third grade.
Since third grade? And what year in school are you now?
Ten.
At?
West High.
At West High. And what are, what are your goals for school?
To graduate, get a good job, and just be successful.
Has this guy taught you anything about how to do that?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
What's my work ethic?
Um, like, how to do good, and like, keep your mind focused, and just, like, don't do anything that you shouldn't do.
So he's helping you keep on the straight and narrow?
Yeah.
All right. Katie, did you want to say anything?
Well, I guess Big Brothers, Big Sisters is just excited to celebrate our fiftieth anniversary this year, and Steve has been a part of our program for close to ten years of that, so we are happy to have him a part of our program, and just suggest that anybody look into Teammates and Big Brothers, Big Sisters and see how you can become involved.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You are more than welcome, guys. Thank you very much.
It's the first time I've ever seen Councilman Schmidt speechless.
Well, it's a certificate well deserved, Steve, congratulations. All right, let's go on with business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hart.
I'd like to move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items one A through B twelve. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we approve our bills payment schedule, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents. That's nine three three, comma, seven four zero point one eight.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions or concerns regarding tonight's consent agenda? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Let's do the resolutions, please, two, three, and four. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt?
You did have one.
Oh, nope. Dammit, I thought I looked at that. I certainly do, Steve. My golly. Charles Payton, is Charles with us?
He is.
Charles, stand up, would you please? We want to recognize you for crying out loud. Charles is a reappointment on the Memorial Hall Commission, and Charles, you've been there before, so you're starting another term, and we just want to know that we appreciate your service to the city. Thank you very much for what you do, and, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort to be on our boards, and we greatly appreciate it, saying thank you for coming tonight. Very good. Good job.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Want to take three at a time, is that what...
Yes, please.
Item number two, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving memorandum of understanding of homeland security investigations for the reimbursement of joint operations expense from the Treasury forfeiture Fund and authorize Director of Safety Services to execute said document. Item number three is adopting a resolution approving submission of a grant application to the Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Program for an alcohol impaired driving incentive grant, four oh five C program. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving agreement with College Square Mall Partners LLC for a satellite operation of the Phelps Youth Pavilion within a three-thousand square foot location within the mall in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions regarding two, three, or four? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greenwood.
Number five is a resolution approving demolition and site clearance contract, the amount of forty-one thousand, thirty-five dollars with Lehman Trucking and Excavating in Waterloo, Iowa, for demolition and site clearance of the following properties: five twenty-three Dawson Street, three eleven Adams Street, four twenty-six Adams Street, six thirty-five Sumner Street, one oh nine Oneida Street, one oh six Lynn Street, two oh three Dane Street, which is a garage only. Number six is a resolution approving a change order, number one, for a net increase of twenty-nine hundred, twenty-six dollars for work performed by K. and W. Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the, to replace the airfield lighting vault project for the Waterloo Regional Airport. And number seven is a resolution approving agreement with Harley-Davidson Cycle Center to lease two twenty-ten Harley-Davidson motorcycles at a cost of one hundred and thirty-five dollars per month, per motorcycle, for one year, plus the routine maintenance. Authorize the mayor to execute that said document.
Second. Very good, there's a motion, a second, but we have somebody at the microphone.
Yeah, back on number four, resolution, a little explanation, or I'd like to have a little explanation why we, is that three thousand dollars for a year, or thirty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and why are we spending the money in Cedar Falls when there's plenty of places in Waterloo we could put that?
Okay, let me answer that for you, John. I thought you might have something on five, six, or seven, so we're going to take a vote on that, and I'll let our director answer your question. It's a roll call vote, please, on five, six, or seven.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good, motions carry. Kent, could you answer, Mr. Sherbonne, please, on item number four?
Certainly. Kent Schenkel, Culture and Arts Director. The space that we're looking at is a three-thousand-square-foot space at College Square Mall. It is being offered to us at a significantly reduced rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per month, and we're planning to relocate our miniature golf exhibit, which has been very popular in that space, which is available to us. We fully expect that space to not only cover its costs, but to generate revenues, which will come back to the city of Waterloo, and the Waterloo location at that mall would not be a reasonable alternative because there's already a miniature golf course in that mall. Does that answer questions?
Thank you, Kent. We're moving on, please, to eight, nine, ten.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move that we adopt a resolution approving memorandum of agreement for governmental services with Blackhawk County for the city to provide technical and professional services to the county, including code enforcement, building inspection, planning and zoning, and issuance of E nine eleven addresses, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number nine, I move to adopt a resolution approving amendment to the property exchange agreement with Andrews Luson for the reimbursement of expenses for the relocation to increase the original fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars amount to fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And ten, I move to adopt a resolution approving lease agreement with Janet Kendall Post for property located just west of nine zero three Riverside Drive for one dollar until December first, two thousand and thirteen, and author mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
It's December thirty-first, Mr. Hart, but...
What did I say? December first. December thirty-first.
I'll second it. Very good. Then a motion and second. Questions, council? Mr. Greenwood?
Can I get some explanation in number nine, what happened there?
You bet. Who is that? Noel, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. As part of the, this is the paintball operation, as part of their relocation up on Airline Highway, of course, they had to put in a curb cut entrance to that site to use it. That was all figured into the relocation expenses. When we actually got out there and started looking at it with the engineering department and Mr. Luson, it was determined that a larger culvert size would be more appropriate to handle the drainage improvements in that area, so this is the cost to cover that difference in the size of the pipe.
Thanks.
Very good. Anything further? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motions carry, please, next three.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Number eleven is a resolution approving a lease agreement with George A. Ryan and Loretta R. Ryan for property located just east of seven twenty-seven Riverside Drive for a dollar until December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number twelve is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Darlene Yegla for property located just south of five oh nine Riverside Drive for a dollar until December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Thirteen's a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with INRCO, INRCOG, for the preparation and submittal of the Safe Route to School Grant Application for the Lou Henry Elementary School and the Hoover Middle School Project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Council, any questions? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Thank you, we have four left. If somebody could take those four, please. Mr. Getty.
Item fourteen, make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting responsibility and maintenance of Lou Henry Elementary School and Hoover Middle School, safe route to school of the pedestrian improvements for a period of ten years. Item fifteen, is a resolution approving Lou Henry Elementary School and Hoover Middle School for safe routes to school grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item sixteen is a resolution approving right-of-way lease agreement with Deere and Company, allowing the use of city right-of-way for a communication system, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item eighteen is...
Seventeen. Oh, we deleted it, I'm sorry. That's correct, so we only had three after all. My mistake. Second. Very good. Are there questions or comments regarding fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen?
Oh, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Item eighteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item eighteen, I'd like to make a motion to instruct Leisure Services Director to prepare specifications, bid document, et cetera, and that's for the purchase of a two thousand and thirteen golf turf equipment.
Second. Very good, council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. Council, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution and setting the date of hearing and bid opening as February eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid document, et cetera, and taking of bids.
Second. It's a roll call vote, madam clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to instruct Leisure Services Director to prepare plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera, for the Gates Park Golf Course, Gates Park Golf Course, Verden Creek Erosion Project.
Second. Council, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as February eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. We had a relatively short and easy session. It is time for oral comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to me or council, now's the time to do so. Please just step to the microphone, and please give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Judy Sileski, and I live at two-ten Williston. On the night of January twenty-ninth, at nine forty-five, I had a man come to the door. My house was dark, I was getting ready for bed, and my dog barked quite a lot, and he, I pay attention to that. And I went and looked out my front window, which my house was dark, so he was going down my steps. I have about six steps, and he rounded the corner of my house and went to the side, and went over to my neighbor man that lives at two-fourteen Williston. I called nine-one-one, did not go to the door. It took, I think, five rings to get nine-one-one, I was kind of surprised, and my neighbor man said he looked at him right through his door window. They looked at each other face to face, and he called. He also went to his kitchen and got a knife. I said that probably wasn't too good of an idea, but, and he also called, and then the cops came out and shined their lights and talked to us and calmed us down, I guess. I think this is really unacceptable. How would you like it if this happened to your mother or your father, your son or daughter, your grandfather or grandmother? I did give my dog an extra dog biscuit.
Thank you, Judy. Chief, do you want to respond, please, and just kind of, if you could maybe walk through what we, the circumstances of that night, I mean, we've been through it, so if we could just kind of explain from the police department's standpoint what we did and what we are doing?
Yes, let's see. The Antroloca Director of Safety Services, we had three officers go to that call. It took them five minutes, thirty-six seconds to respond. They did not locate the gentleman. Given the circumstances of the call, that's a typical response time, five minutes, thirty-six seconds. They had no reason to run with lights and siren, and it just, we have many busy nights in Waterloo, and that happened to be one of our busy nights, so we had an arson call come in after this. We had a very peculiar intruder call come in about an hour before this that officers were tied up on, but we're focusing a lot of energy and efforts on this neighborhood. As a matter of fact, we've assigned three sergeants to this neighborhood, one on each shift, and they're directing their patrol officers to do additional patrol in a neighborhood. We've been towing cars. We've had a meeting with the mayor and Councilman Schmidt and many of these department heads sitting here. We've sent letters to the landlords who own the apartments. I've sat down with one of those landlords thus far, so we're coming up with a strategy, we're coming up with a plan.
man that lives at 214 Williston. I called 911, did not go to the door. It took, I think, five rings to get 911. I was kind of surprised. And my neighbor man said he looked at him right through his door window. They looked at each other face to face. And he called. He also went to his kitchen and got a knife. I said that probably wasn't too good of an idea, but, and he also called, and then the cops came out and shined their lights and talked to us and calmed us down, I guess. I think this is really unacceptable. How would you like it if this happened to your mother or your father, your son or daughter, your grandfather or grandmother? I did give my dog an extra dog biscuit.
Thank you, Judy. Chief, do you want to respond, please? And just kind of, if you could maybe walk through what we, the circumstances of that night, I mean, we've been through it, so if we could just kind of explain from the police department's standpoint what we did and what we are doing.
Yes, let's see. The Antrocalque Director of Safety Services, we had three officers go to that call. It took them 5 minutes 36 seconds to respond. They did not locate the gentleman. Given the circumstances of the call, that's a typical response time, 5 minutes 36 seconds. They had no reason to run with lights and siren, and it just, we have many busy nights in Waterloo, and that happened to be one of our busy nights. So we had an arson call come in after this. We had a very peculiar intruder call come in about an hour before this that officers were tied up on. But we're focusing a lot of energy and efforts on this neighborhood. As a matter of fact, we've assigned three sergeants to this neighborhood, one on each shift, and they're directing their patrol officers to do additional patrol in the neighborhood. We've been towing cars. We've had a meeting with the mayor and Councilman Schmidt and many of these department heads sitting here. We've sent letters to the landlords who own the apartments. I've sat down with one of those landlords thus far. So we're coming up with a strategy, we're coming up with a plan. You should actually be seeing mark squad cars in that neighborhood continually right now. Our more violent crime rates tend to be dropping in that neighborhood, but our suspicious-type calls are going up in that neighborhood, and that's good.
That's a good thing.
Because people are calling us and letting us know what's going on. As a matter of fact, burglaries seem to have plummeted in this, throughout the entire city, and that's good. But we're putting a lot of energy, time, and effort into this particular neighborhood, and we will see progress soon.
Dan, I just, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, there's been a lot of attention paid to the 5-minute and 36-second response time. And I think I sent Mr...
Murphy.
Murphy, an email regarding this, and, you know, our response times are judged, not judged, wrong word, depend on some, several factors. How busy the officers are, what kind of call it is, how far the officers are from the location. I mean, there's just as much of an opportunity that if the officers wouldn't have been busy, they might have been there in 30 seconds instead of 5 minutes and 30 seconds. And the response time is really predicated by several different things completely beyond our control. And we're very aware of this particular neighborhood. And I think officers are going to get to that neighborhood on any kind of a call as quickly as they possibly can. Am I right in that statement?
You are right. And the one thing we often forget is the sheer size of our city, 63 square miles. We're the same size as Madison, Wisconsin. We don't have as large a population, but land area-wise, we are that large. The roads were very bad that night. They were, there was snow on them, it was slippery. The officers didn't have cause to go to that call with lights and siren, but I'll give you a good example here of a call they did. The other intruder call where they responded, we sent five officers to a man-in-a-house call, they were unseen in two minutes. Five officers in two minutes. But sometimes luck just is not on our side in responding to what we have to characterize as a routine call. Sadly, as many bad things as are going on in that neighborhood or incidents we've had in the past, this was categorized as a routine call, but with the officers being familiar as to what was going on in that neighborhood, they responded with urgency. That's why we responded with three officers. Six months ago, that call would have generated a one-officer response. It just so happened, it took the first officer, actually, the first two officers arrived at the same time, 5 minutes and 36 seconds. Compared to other cities our size on a routine call, that's a pretty darn good response time.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Yes, sir.
My name's Charles Payton. I live at 220 Lenwood Avenue. On your state pensions for your firemen and your police officers, did the state say that you had to do this?
We have to contribute. Yes, sir, we do.
I mean, did they agree to pay part of the payment?
They did initially, yes, when the...
Why didn't they continue?
Good question. Great question. Ask your governor that.
Another thing about it is, you know, you do have a court of law. They got a million dollars they don't know what to do with. Another thing, the state or the government sent me a letter that on my pension, my social